Mr. Brown.
Here.
Okay, all right, so we pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes from the December 12, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion on a second or eight discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Carry six, nothing. Item two is a special report concerning the 2023 snow operation plan.
Yes, I've invited Mr. Hurson, the Public Works Director, to come tonight to talk to you about the snow operations plan that we intend to use for 2023. I think there were some challenges last year, particularly with the snowstorms we had that were over an extended period of time, and the thought was that they come up with a system to address that so that, in fact, the snow removal could occur in an efficient way, but also in a safe way, so that, in fact, employees weren't being put at risk to be able to do it, and so.
All right, the snow operations plan changes how we'll handle snowstorms. In the past, the department would remain on the job with a full crew until the entire storm was over. With extended storms and drivers working 20, 30, and a times 36 hour straight, it's placing everyone's safety in danger. We are proposing that instead of calling all 19 drivers in and working extended hours, 13 drivers be called in to work a 12-hour shift. There will be five drivers in reserve to work the extended snowstorm. Callouts will be made by the police or public works. Brian will be applied one to two days before the storm by drivers who are not assigned one of the 13 snow routes. After 11:00 p.m., two drivers will be assigned to 12-hour shift. They will treat the main roads and be available for emergency calls. They will go home after 12 hours with pay for their normal shift. They will be available to return after a reasonable break, and at least one supervisor will be on duty. And the morning crew will arrive at a predetermined time, usually at 5:00 a.m. before the school buses are out. 12 hours of maximum driving time, after which there'll be a significant break. Rest areas to be set up at the fire station or the rec center. Employees who stay will be paid. Employees who live close, breaks can be taken at home without pay. The priorities, number one is roads. Sidewalks within 24 hours, parking lots when the office is open, followed by the trail. And then a written report will be provided at the end of the storm.
That report then will be included in the monthly reports that you get, so that you'll have an understanding of how that snow event occurred and what the response was.
Any questions or concerns?
I had a question. On one of those slides, I think it was one of the first couple of slides, you had something about there would be one mechanic on?
He'll be there to load the trucks, yes.
Okay. Well, what do we do if, like, something breaks down?
The guys load their own trucks, and the mechanic's back in the garage.
And there's always going to be somebody there if this goes more than 12 hours?
Yes.
You only have one mechanic.
We only have one mechanic.
You have one mechanic. So he doesn't drive. He can be there for extended periods, but for anyone, there's a limit to how long you can work. What Joe's referring to that occurred last year, it just can't occur. We had guys out 36 hours and with short breaks in between that time, and it just isn't a safe thing.
After we left that 36-hour storm, the cops called an hour and a half later. We got five of the guys back. That was it. They were spent.
That's a long time, really.
So one of the other things that we're going to do, there are a number of roads in the township that are steep hills, and the one that always comes to mind is Trinity Drive. And we're going to be sending out letters to all the people who live on those streets requesting that, when there's a snow event, that they get their cars off of the street. It's amazing how many people choose to park on the street while these guys are out trying to clear the streets. And it's dangerous for the drivers, but it's also dangerous for those people in terms of their vehicles and our ability to maneuver around them, so.
Joe or Paul, it was at least a decade ago, I guess, where we sort of set up a benchmark of trying to say, what a cycle time to complete a plowing.
Yeah, and actually, that snow policy is in your docket, and it's, you know, the idea is for salting, it was three hours for plowing, it's four, so.
What do we think the impact of this will be toward that, or?
We'll make adjustments for each storm. Every storm's different. We're going to have to make adjustments. We got called out 12:30 the other night, and we had 13 guys out.
And, you know, that's the one thing that I would like to say about this. I think this is a plan, but it's only a plan, and it's only a guideline, and what Joe's saying is the reality is that each storm's different, and this is just the guideline, so.
I have a question then regarding the other night. You said it was, what, midnight that you got the call?
Yeah, 12:30.
But I thought the plan after 11, it was two people. Or is that only during an extended storm event that you?
Yeah, it's just during an extended storm. We could have had two guys out. They'd have been here all night, or they probably wouldn't have got it all done. Church was the next day. There would be people out, so.
And this idea of having two guys out overnight is actually a method that was used for years and years and years here. We did not do plans in the middle of the night. We made sure that the roads were open. You had two guys here, and part of the reason why you have two guys here is that if you have an emergency situation where an ambulance or a fire truck or a police car needs to get somewhere, and it's in a plan, they can respond to that, so.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. So the other reason why Joe's here is all the other items under new business, so he's going to hang around for that.
So moving to audience comments. Opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a non-agenda item for up to five minutes unless extended by council.
Anthony Brown, 123 Druid Drive, back to the Druid cell tower and parking. I don't know if I have the ability to stop the no parking I sent to Paul and a few other people. I am pulling back my request to make the hill no parking after speaking with my neighbors. I still think there's a danger there that needs to be looked at, whether it's one way, but it's not a good idea for 111 to 118 to be no parking after speaking with them. The cell tower, the new installation Verizon, were you able to pull scope of work on that, Tom?
No, I have not.
Do you know, was the scope of work supposed to be limited to Verizon and the new pole and tower?
I don't know that, but what he's referring to is this. So the antenna on the right is the, is the, yeah, this picture up here. Yeah, and then the new tower is the one on the left, but for whatever reason, you have this set of cables that come across from the right up and then back over.
Right, so you have your AT&amp;T box. My understanding was this was a Verizon permit, and that these cop uses no way, shape, or form interact with each other. So the old AT&amp;T box coming up out of the ground, this one really doesn't serve justice, comes up, it looks about like 12 fire hoses, very unappealing, coming up across up the new Verizon pole, back across the catwalk, and up to the original AT&amp;T tower. I spoke to the foreman on site, that's how they drew it. Yes, it looks terrible, but their statement is ice and snow. So I don't know how ice and snow is less of a problem in this arena than a vertical run. I'm not, you know, an engineer, but it seems like ice and snow would be more of a factor in this double-crossing run, and most of it's vertical anyway. I just wondered, scope of work, if this is a Verizon install, why are we messing with the AT&amp;T tower? It seemed maybe outside of scope of work. So there's a company employed by Verizon, and I guess most of these people call Diamond, Diamond something, that do these builds and installs. Supposedly, they're going to talk and relook at the cabling and then potential facades or dressing up to make it more visually appealing. Have you heard anything on that, Mr. Low?
I have not.
Okay. All right, well, Mr. Zuck came out, the drawings did match, and I would just love to see if we can have any input with him, because if you drive up there, it's a mess. It's, it could have been done a lot better, if it has to be done. I don't understand the double crossing and why that's a good idea, and why they're involved in AT&amp;T work on a Verizon install.
And if council wants, I can attempt to get an answer on that, so.
How did it originally run before the new?
They had a straight run.
Just straight up the side?
So this is Eddie's house, Chris' house?
Yeah.
So there's a box coming out on this back support, and if you get up there, this, Tom came by, if you get up there and look, they've upgraded this box with massive amounts of cabling coming up and then crossing over.
And then go that way. But before it went straight up?
Yes, sir.
I can say there wasn't that, there wasn't that much cabling on that before.
It was hardly noticeable before.
This is, I agree with you, Tony. I mean, it's awful. So, yeah, Paul, I think we should definitely.
I can tell you.
I mean, this is, you know, our neighborhoods we live in don't deserve to have something like that. Before, it didn't look like this. It's, I mean, and this picture really doesn't do justice. You know, I have some other pictures that Tony sent to me seeing it, so we'll look into it.
When they come in for the permit, don't they have to give a drawing as to what this is going to look like or anything of that nature?
Ed showed it to me. We have a small, like, site kind of.
Yeah, we issued, we issued the building permit for the Verizon tower and antenna components on the left side.
Not the crisscross squiggly wiring?
I'd have to go back and look at the permit exactly.
I don't think they showed.
I don't recall seeing that exactly, but I need to go back and look at that again and reevaluate.
It's in the drawing. Ed showed it to me.
Are they showing it crisscross?
Yes, Ed showed it to me, and we then had a discussion of did it get looked at before we stamped it?
But it would, from the township's perspective, I don't think we would have any authority to make determination about that. That doesn't mean we can't ask for cooperation in terms of.
Well, I think your linkage would be that you're doing AT&amp;T work on a Verizon install.
Or not.
Why couldn't these companies work together and then on one install anyway if they're going to get tight like that?
I'm trying to understand what the rationale would be for them taking the wire across, up, and then back over.
Well, because.
Unless it's like a weight distribution.
No, I think it's, I think the structural stability, that unipole is a hell of a lot higher than coming up that tower, which, and again, my recollection of this is the what went to that AT&amp;T antenna was nowhere near that amount of cabling prior to this.
Alleged had that area, or West Penn's owned by First Energy. I spoke to him. He said that they would not allow Verizon to install the way they wanted to, which was the same way as the original AT&amp;T, without changing it and putting up the pole because of stress loads. He also had the same answer for the cabling. It doesn't make sense to me, the cabling, you know, how that is less of a load via ice and snow infiltration than how a vertical run would have been.
So are they done with the installation now? At least all the parts that they're going to be putting up?
They're getting close. I know power's going to be connected in the middle of this week. We were told the hope was to be done by Christmas.
So hopefully it won't look any worse than it looks now, not that that's saying anything, but.
If we can't do anything here, just whatever you guys can think of for the future, because I think there's going to be more of these rather than less.
We would love to, Mr. Brown. Unfortunately, the Commonwealth has tied our hands, you know? We would say, you know, write your state senator, write your state rep, and have them change the regulations.
I don't think you can have some pay that you can reap. There's ways that you can work. I don't think it's just a general, we issue a permit, and we do whatever we want. They need to work with you, and I think there's things you can do to make them want to work with you a little bit for you.
Yeah, I think we probably need to engage them a little more closely going forward, but Paul, if he could reach out.
Yeah.
Any other audience comments this time? All right, see, now we're moving to new business. The first will be an award for the purchase of a Ford F-600 Super Duty cabin chassis.
So one of the things on the agenda are the purchase of a couple of trucks in the backhoe, and the reason why it is there is that, quite honestly, the lead times are really long. The other thing is that we've been told is that if we wait until the new year, there'll be price increases, and so we wanted to take advantage of the quotes that we had and award these vehicles now, knowing that, in fact, on some of them, they may not even arrive next year. So the first item is a Ford F-600 Super Duty cabin chassis. The budget includes an appropriation of $140,000, and this is replacing an existing truck. It's, the price for the cabin chassis is $54,975, and it's being purchased under the CoStarz program. To be able to use that cabin chassis, a dump body, a plow, a spreader, and a pre-wet system need to be purchased. And again, we're suggesting to purchase that under the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program, and the cost of that is $65,600. So the total cost of the truck is $120,575, which is $19,425 below the amount appropriated.
Will we shell the existing truck?
We will.
I'll make a motion that we award a contract for the purchase of a Ford F-600 Super Duty cabin chassis through the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program to Laurel Auto Group, Inc. in the amount of $54,975, and that we award a contract for the purchase, for the body and uplifting, upfitting of that vehicle through CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program to Stevenson Equipment in the amount of $65,600.
Second.
Okay, motion on a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Carry six, nothing. Items C and D, then, similar purchase. This one will be for a Kenworth T480 cabin chassis and then the prospective upfitting.
And I think that I would point out that the total cost of the truck equipped is $210,664, which is $39,000, $36 below the amount that's appropriated.
All right, I'll make a motion that we award a contract for the purchase of a Kenworth T480 cabin chassis through the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of $210,664.
Second.
Okay, move for motion on a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Six, nothing. Item A will be award of a contract for the purchase of a backhoe at a CoStarz.
So the budget includes appropriation of $200,000 to acquire replacement for the township's current backhoe. The earliest delivery of this piece of equipment will be August of 2022.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, excuse me. The total cost of the vehicle, the backhoe with the attachments is $189,173, which is $10,800 less than the amount appropriated.
I'll make a motion to award contract for the purchase of Caterpillar 420-078 backhoe loader through the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program, Cleveland Brothers Cat, in the amount of $189,173 and $66.
Second. Motion on a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay, six, nothing on that. Award of a contract for storm sewer cameras.
So the township currently has a stick camera. It's that picture on the left-hand side. It is no longer functional. It is old and inoperable, and parts aren't available for it. The budget includes an appropriation of $35,000 to acquire a stick camera as well as a push camera. The stick camera is used for things like stormwater tanks. The push camera is used to be able to actually get things down, pipes like curb drains and sewer pipes. The quoted price from A&amp;H is $31,293, and this is $3,007 or $6 less than the amount that was appropriated for it. It's my recommendation that we award a contract to A&amp;H Equipment for the purchase of that.
Paul, I noticed that this is going to be through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing.
Yes.
Was, I assume this was cheaper than going through CoStarz or some?
CoStarz, this equipment isn't available under CoStarz, and Source, yeah, Sourcewell is a cooperative purchasing arrangement that we do participate in, and we have purchased things in the past.
I'll make a motion that we award a contract for the purchase of the storm sewer cameras through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program to A&amp;H Equipment in the amount of $31,293 and 86 cents.
Second.
Okay, motion on a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Carry six, nothing. Item A will be a request for departure from the Township Subdivision Land Development Ordinance regarding diameter, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one.
Your G.
Yeah, G. Regarding a new lot along a Collector Street on Beavout Road for, I believe, the MacRino subdivision.
So what you're looking at is a preliminary subdivision plan to take a 10-acre parcel and divide it into two. And the reason why this is here is that there is a restriction in the Peters Township Code that does not allow further subdivision of property if it creates another driveway onto a Collector Street. So what's being proposed is that an easement be established, and the driveway, which is already a shared driveway, be shared by this third lot. The lot's being created for a family member to build a home, and the Peters Township Planning Commission has reviewed this and recommended its approval. There are conditions that the Planning Commission has placed, and then in addition of that, one of the conditions the Planning Commission has stated is that a shared maintenance agreement be maintained in perpetuity for all three properties. And what I'm recommending is that that agreement be required to be recorded, and that the subdivision clearly shows the easement across the property, including the easement that would come down the driveway that would allow someone to have access off that driveway, so.
I'll make a motion that we grant the departure from the regulation to allow the creation of that new lot on Beavout Road, subject to the conditions proposed by the Planning Commission as well as those proposed by the manager tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion on a second. Any further discussion on this?
Paul, one question. These lots, are they currently all owned by the same person?
The lot that's being subdivided is, there's, yeah, there's a 10-acre lot. The lot to the right, if, correct me if I'm wrong, except, is owned by a family member too.
This is all three family members. It's brothers that own the two properties that are serviced by that existing shared driveway.
They're going to be rolled back.
Well, no, the issue is it's a doctrine of merger. How can you give an easement across your own property?
But it won't be his own property. What's the subdivision?
Well, I understand that. The question is, well, it's a timing thing, and so I would add an additional condition that the easement can't be recorded until the property's, the property's, the title's actually conveyed out, because if they all own the property together, they can't give, you can't give yourself an easement, and I don't want some slick lawyer coming in 10 years from now if they try to sell this to somebody else saying, hey, you know, this easement doesn't, isn't valid because, you know, it was in common ownership when they granted it, so.
That's a good point.
One that would never have come across my mind. That's good.
So somebody made a, I make a motion. I'll just add that.
In a second.
Okay. All right. Anything else on this? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Carry six, nothing. Item H will be another departure of regulations from subdivision of land development ordinance dealing with the diameter of cul-de-sacs, specifically, I believe, in the Westbury plant.
So the Township's code of regulations require the temporary cul-de-sacs have a minimum paving radius of 40 feet. The original approved preliminary plan for Westbury showed a 40-foot cul-de-sac, but when this cul-de-sac went to be constructed, it's not possible physically to get that in. What is possible is to get a cul-de-sac with a 30-foot radius, and if you look in your docket from the report from Mr. Zomitis, we've checked with the fire department, with the public works department, as to whether or not this works for their purposes, and it does. The other thing I would point out to you is that one of the things that the developers of Westbury did for the township at our request was to create a turnaround on, which street was that?
Mervin.
Mervin, where one doesn't exist, and they did that at their own expense, and quite frankly, to no, to no value to them since Mervin does not connect into their development. So I think this, what's here is functional. I think it's unfortunate that it isn't to the diameter that the code requires, but my recommendation that council grant the departure from regulation.
Can you tell me the reason why they couldn't be 40 feet?
Well, developers here, and maybe she can tell you, but what I, if I had to guess, I think that the topographic information that was gathered when the drawings were done didn't reflect the steepness of the slope there. That's what, that's my guess, but I don't know whether.
Well, I mean, you can, just looking at the contours, I mean, you can tell that it's a steep slope there, which questions, makes me question why nobody noticed that before, but I mean, if the fire department, everyone else is fine with it, I mean, I think it's a non-issue. I'll make a motion that Environmental Sound Enterprises LLC be granted a departure from regulations contained in the Township Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance regarding the diameter of a temporary cul-de-sac.
Second.
Motion on a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Okay, carry five, the one. Item I will be approval of the final plan for the Westbury Plan of Lots Phase One.
So there was a preliminary plan that was originally approved by the Planning Commission in 2019, and subsequent to that approval, there was an approval of the final plan by Peters Township Council. Environmental Sound Enterprises has filed an amended preliminary plan, and the Planning Commission has approved that, and that approval occurs at the Planning Commission level. So what's back in front of council is a final plan based upon that preliminary plan. So where the plan is different than it was originally before council is that, one, they're phasing this. When it was originally approved, it was all one phase, so this has been divided into two phases. So the final plan that you're looking at are those lots that you see down below, the upper parcels being developed, but it's going to be developed as a second phase in the plan. The other thing, at one point in time, the place for the mailbox pickup was located on that street where the temporary cul-de-sac is. It's been moved to the front of the plan, which, quite frankly, is probably a much more practical location for cluster mailboxes. There was a tot lot, and it's been moved onto the open space in the back of the plan. And then there was a new lot created inside the plan, and there's a lot that sits down on Venetia Road that has now been removed from the plan, and their intention is to dispose of that lot separately, and probably to the adjacent property owners, because there's a storm sewer that runs diagonally across that lot. So the changes in the plan aren't significant, and again, I think the, from the township standpoint and the approval process, it's this idea that it's being phased, so. So it's our recommendation that council approve this final plan subject to the conditions of the Planning Commission. The only one that's outstanding is the approval from the Peters Creek Sanitary Board.
What are the size of these lots?
What's that?
What are the size of these lots? Quarter acre?
About a quarter of an acre, yeah.
Why are we, why are they changing it at the last minute like this? I mean, wasn't the original plan already approved?
Yes, but that doesn't prevent you from refiling and changing preliminary plan. And the preliminary plan isn't approved plan, but what all you're doing now is they're dividing it into phases, so. And the plan conforms to all the township regulations, so.
So are you going to make a motion on this?
Well, well, whether or not any of us want to make a motion, one of us has to. And since the plan complies with all the town, current township ordinances, I'll make a motion that council approve the final plan for Westbury Plan of Lots Phase One as shown on drawings prepared by KU Resources, Inc., dated November 28, 2022, for Environmentally Sound Enterprises LLC.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this?
Well, this plot and, or this set of plans is some of the material that we are taking under consideration and the revisions that we're going to be contemplating. I think that's, in general, the reluctance that some of my fellow councilmen had approving it, but.
Well, not to interrupt you, Mr. Lewis. I get concerned when we approve a preliminary plan and then we come back in with, you know, issues with topography and cul-de-sacs not fitting and things like that. Makes me wonder whether, you know, someone dropped the ball somewhere early on in the process, but that's neither here nor there since they comply with what the ordinances are. As of now, our hands are sort of tied, so.
Well, I'm not disputing that, but I'm just saying that it is not the type of plan that consistently satisfies my development of what that property would have been.
Needless to say, never that I imagine when we allowed the quarter acre lots, it would be looking at something that essentially has like two circles in the middle.
Two donuts, huh?
Exactly, which I guess meets the open space requirement. But in practicality, what are you going to do with it other than mow it, I suppose? Anyway, we'll save this discussion for next year when we bring this up, so.
So a motion. I don't believe we have a second.
Yeah, I second.
Did he? Okay. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Okay, carries five, zero, one. Item J will be approval of the final plan for the Fife Farms Development Number Five.
So, Crean Fife Holdings is the owner of a 13-acre parcel of land located at 100 Fife Farm Lane. Aon Properties, on behalf of the owner, is seeking township's approval of a subdivision that will result in seven residential lots. The lots range in size from approximately one to three acres. There's a table in your report that explains how that division is occurring. If you recollect, this is the plan where township granted a departure to allow for a cul-de-sac that's 845 feet. And the stormwater plan calls for the installation of tanks, which will be owned by the homeowners association. The Planning Commission, at their July 14 regular meeting, issued a recommendation to council that the Fife Farm Plan Number Five be approved subject to the conditions that are listed in the manager's report. It's my recommendation that council approve the plan subject to those conditions.
So moved. Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Carry six, nothing. Item K will be approval for recording purposes of the Tuscan Plan of Lots, Lot 13 subdivision.
So, 339 Just About Land Company is the owner of a 56-acre parcel located at 339 Just About Road. The company is seeking approval for a subdivision plan combining a portion of that parcel with adjacent parcels, as well as subdividing that parcel. So these are the three parcels in question. In part, this subdivision is motivated by the fact that there's a home that was built across a property line. So what they intend to do is that parcel that's shown in red, to expand that parcel, and then, as well as expand that parcel shown in blue, the large parcel is being subdivided across the road. So, you know, in terms of rectifying the situation with the home that's located on the adjacent property, this is, this is in fact what's occurring, so. So it's, at the December 8 meeting, Peters Township Planning Commission provided a recommendation to council that the Tuscan Plan of Lots 13 subdivision be approved subject to three conditions. And it's my recommendation that council approve the plan subject to those conditions.
So moved.
Right. A motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Carry six, nothing. Final item of new business when we report on the Rolling Hills Aquatic Center bids.
We opened bids on the pool on Thursday. The low, the apparent low bidder is the Hudson Group. It came in at $17,355,000. If you were to take all of the alternates, the price would be $15,451,635. That's well over the amount that is budgeted. And so it's going to be my recommendation that in January, we take formal action to reject the bids. And, you know, I think council needs to have a discussion about what it is you would like to do going forward. At this point, I think we need to let this project sit. We've been at this now for a three-year period. And I don't know how we get to a project the size that, in terms of its cost, that people are comfortable with and meets that requirement that everybody wants, even those who favor the pool and those who oppose the pool. Everyone agrees the pool needs to be able to pay for itself in terms of operations, so. But this will be on the agenda in the second meeting in January for council to take action on the bid.
Have we asked the design firm for their assessment of the bids that we were saying?
Well, one of the things that we're going to be doing with them is to try to, as we did the first time around, to try to get an understanding of what has caused these bids to come in this high based upon talking to the contractors who have bid here. So I don't have that answer yet, but I'll have that answer in January.
Well, and, you know, all through the summer here, I've been talking about what escalation there has been in construction costs, and, you know. And the magnitude of 20, 30% is not something that would have surprised me.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate, but it's part of the time, so. Okay.
Okay, so full report on this, that'll be available?
Yes.
January 2nd, I guess, or 3rd?
Well, actually, we won't be doing it at the reorganization. We do it in that second meeting in January.
Okay.
Which really gets us to the next question, though.
Is there any other discussion on this from the audience at all regarding these?
Do you ever get a price on what it was going to cost to?
Can you come up to the podium just?
You need to identify yourself, and if you can sign and put your address on.
Steve Rens, A38 East McMurray Road. Did we ever get a cost on what it was going to, what it was going to take to run this place? What was the expenses?
Well, one of the things that we were beginning to gather was just that information. But quite honestly, I don't think it makes sense at this point to do that. The thing that we have been told, and we have examples of it throughout the region, is that pools designed the way this one have the ability to cover their operating expense. We employed the services of Ballard and Associates, the same people who did the financial projections for Upper St. Clair and who St. Clair continues to have underretained because they've worked well for them. And he has looked at this twice and came to the same conclusion that the pool, in terms of its operation, could pay for itself. The other thing that we were going to do, and again, I'm going to pull the plug on it because I don't want people spending time on something we're not going to award. We've identified a third party who would be a preferred vendor to operate the pool, and we were going to ask them as well to produce a proposed budget. But I don't, in all fairness to them, I don't know how you do that when you know that you're not going to award the bid.
Well, so far between planning and studies and site development, how much have we spent on this project so far?
I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head. I don't know that.
You don't know that?
I don't know that off the top of my head, Mr. Rens.
Could we know that by next month?
Sure, you can know that by next month. But I don't.
You'll have those figures.
Yes.
I'm surprised you wouldn't know that. That's pretty.
I'm sorry to disappoint you.
It's been a lot of money spent on this. We should know that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Rick Piazak, 206 Trinity Drive. I do not park in the streets, sir, just saying.
Well, that's good.
You're still getting the letter.
That'll be good for your car.
Just one thing to consider with this. And, you know, my own position on this is, yeah, I'm one of the people who is against it. But with the operating costs of something of that magnitude especially, and something to consider is not only the standard operating cost, but, you know, people have been having a hard time finding pool operators and lifeguards to work at these places. The expense of paying them, the expense of finding them, but also the liability involved. If somebody is injured at one of these locations, the liability for the township, the liability for the pool operators. I just really urge you to consider the long-term cost of this. This is something that's used three months out of the year and will need to be maintained through harsh winters all year long. So I know it's a little preliminary to even get into that, especially what you announced tonight, but just something to consider long-term.
Sure. Oh, we have the reports from the department heads as well on their assessment?
Yes. I'll have those for January.
Thank you.
Could you state for clarity the next steps I was unsure of?
Well, I think the next step is that this will be on the second meeting in January. And the recommend, my recommendation to council is going to be that the bid be rejected. I'm not sure what sense it makes, and if council wants, we can have a workshop. But I'm not sure what sense it makes to have a workshop on a project that we know that we're going to reject.
Why do we have to wait? Why do we have to wait? Because it's not adequate.
It's not, the agenda item is not to take action on the, on the.
That's what I figured.
Okay.
All right. Payroll bills. I'm sorry.
Christina Romano, 626 Scenic Ridge Drive. I wanted to find out if there was any follow-up from Chief Grimes about the crime reports associated with the.
I think that's, that's what I was just mentioning.
Oh, that's what you were talking about, okay. And then the other thing is, I had a question about the survey that was done to see how much of the population of Peters Township actually wanted this project. The only one I saw was, it was about, it was like 300 people were surveyed, and some were outside the township.
There was, there was a scientific survey that was done by Campus Market Research to determine the thing. There was, Ballard King did a report that made determinations about participation. There was a survey that was done online, and people responded to. So there's been three. The comprehensive plan, when it was done, one of the things that it surveyed was whether or not there was an interest in what type of recreational facilities. The number one request, as it has been since I've been here in '84, was for an outdoor community pool, so.
And that, but when that was done also, it was pre-COVID. I think a lot of people are hurting now and don't really have the appetite for something like this. But, you know, I was just curious as to whether or not you would consider doing another survey, sending something out and seeing whether or not people still are interested in this.
I don't think we need to spend any more money.
Right.
On another survey.
No money, okay.
These, I don't anticipate that the recommendation is going to be that we reject all the bids.
I don't think, even if, even if you got a survey back with 100% of the residents of this township wanted it, I don't see how you justify spending $17 million on it.
No, why not? Okay.
So as much as I hate to say, not to make a joke, but the aquatic facility, at least this one, is probably dead in the water. I wasn't, I was not trying to elicit any response from the audience.
Any other comments from the audience?
A question. How does this affect our grants that we've obtained?
Well, there is a grant out there, and it does impact those. And I think we need to move cautiously because of that. But, because this source of funds is the same source of funds that if we're ever to get money to do the dam, this is where you'll get it from. And there is not a need to reject the grant now because you have a five-year window. And so it's, it's in the township's interest to leave that grant open for the time being.
Paul, can you look into whether we can repurpose that grant?
It cannot be repurposed.
And you said five years. That was from the time the grant was awarded?
It's five years from.
From whenever we enter into the grant agreement, which actually would probably be in January, I would imagine.
Yeah.
So in January, we would have to agree to the grant or not?
Yes.
Like, yes.
But I think we need, I think this is a legal matter that we need to talk about in executive session because there's implications to that agreement.
Okay.
Anybody else from council have any comments on this?
No.
Right, it's yours now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them to be in order, and I move they be approved to submit it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Correspond to see if anything. Did you see the certified letter? I'm assuming you got it.
Yes, and it had to do with traffic situation on the portion of the road that we own. There have been, this year for some reason, there have been a number of accidents on the road. We have shipped over the accident information. I've asked Mr. Modrić to do traffic counts on the road and to take a look at it and make recommendations.
Is somebody going to get back to Mr. Herter on that?
Yes. Actually, you know, one of the officers, one of the things that we do with speeding complaints and these kind of complaints is there's an officer assigned to go out and talk to a resident whenever they come in. So the officer's going to go out and speak with him.
Perfect. Reports? Does anybody want to discuss anything on those?
No, sir.
Miscellaneous.
The solicitors made it clear that we need to meet on the week of the 2nd, so we need to meet one day that week, so.
I'm fine with the 2nd.
You don't have to meet the 2nd. Most municipalities are not because it is a holiday. They're meeting the 3rd under the first and second-class township codes, which you don't fall in anyway. You can meet anytime that week.
Yeah.
Well, I remember the last time, January, for the New Year's Day was observed on January 2nd. We came in here and, you know.
It's better to us. We're fine with that.
I mean, you know, unless we've got any Penn State people who are going to be upset about, one of the bowl games on New Year's Day, right?
Yeah.
So there's no, at that point, you know, why not?
So you're saying do it on the 2nd?
I would do it the 2nd. I mean, I don't have an issue with doing it the 2nd.
I'm fine with that.
Should be, are you?
Okay, we'll do it the 2nd. You have anything else?
I do not.
Okay. I, I had a couple of things. Roby Road, where the trees were all cut down. Thinking, might want to look at guardrails there, because whereas the trees would have served as guardrails previously, I think somebody's going to end up going over that.
But all those lots are going to be developed there very shortly. That's part of that plan.
If there's a snow event here this week, somebody's going to, could be seriously hurt.
I don't know how you could put, I don't know how you could put guardrail up when they're going to develop. I don't know how that's going to, that would work. We can look at it. I don't know how it's going to work.
Well, I mean, put some concrete barriers up.
Something needs to be done.
Until they're ready to develop, then move them.
Jersey, yeah, we got traffic cones or something like that.
Yeah, but there was no barrier there before.
The trees, the trees must stop you from going over that hill.
Yeah.
They're not there now.
You know, I'll just take a look at it. I'll see if we can do something.
The other thing, can we get a report, since the season's pretty much over, and I'm getting questions about it regarding the deer kill within our archers? There's still some time left, and I'm curious where they're at now, and where our deer collision numbers are.
Sure.
Thank you.
And I, I think, Gary, along those lines, I had asked before about the reason why crime was up so much. And I don't know if I ever got any answers.
Don't recall hearing that.
I thought we did. If you want, I can add chief, chief crimes.
That's all I had.
Are we, are we going to vote on appointment?
No, at the reorganization meeting. Those are all.
I thought we were doing it tonight. I thought we needed one tonight for Peters, Peters Creek.
No, the, the intention is, that person is serving at the beginning of the year. The intention wasn't the reorganization meeting.
Okay.
It's not an objective.
That was not my understanding.
Okay, that's, yeah, sorry. I misunderstood you, too. I thought we were doing that tonight. Okay.
Anything else?
I got a brief executive session.